It's three o'clock. I'll call the meeting on the select board to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, and recorded by BORN TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, The Zoom meeting ID is 815-74301173, and the password is all capitals, workshop. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberative votes. First item is public comment on non-agenda items. Do we know who the person with that?
That is Melissa.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
I note that Anne-Marie Saronian is here, Peter Meyer is here, MJ Strangel is here, and Melissa Ferretti is on Zoom. Jared McDonald is not present. Policy workshop with the town council marijuana. There are one, two, three, five different topics under this. We may mix and match a little bit in the discussion, so we won't necessarily have them all compartmentalized. Discuss social equity policy model bylaw. Review and discuss revised comparative criteria and rating scales. Review proposed revisions to the model HCA. Establishing a local license or not. Is the bylaw necessary? Licensing fees. Discuss timeline to-do list. We'll start with discuss social equity policy model bylaw. So, Evria, do you want to kind of talk a little bit about what you sent? Or sort of the general topic of how we go about doing this?
Yeah, so I circulated the draft model bylaw that the Cannabis Control Commission is accepting public comment on. It has not been finalized, but the way that it currently reads is that it's primarily a recitation of the regulatory requirements into a bylaw format. I think that there's nothing in there that is inherently in conflict with anything we've been discussing as a group up until this point. The bylaw does give the option for the community to assist in a more technical manner applicants that qualify as social equity or other applicants. So that would be a policy decision for the board to make. It's not a requirement under the bylaw. I do think it is wise to wait until the commission actually adopts the final model bylaw before we make a decision about whether or not to put this forward to town meeting. But in and of itself, I don't see anything in here that diverges from what we've been discussing.
So, I have a couple of comments. I mean, I definitely wouldn't start a -- we can't do a bylaw until the fall anyway. So, we don't have it on our town meeting, and we're not going to get it on our town meeting. And I want to talk about the necessity of having a bylaw, because the bylaw, my reading of it, creates a lot of -- number one, it brings back to town meeting the whole question of marijuana, which would become a whole, opening up a whole debate. So, I'm not sure how excited I am about that prospect. If we go, if we don't have a bylaw, do we basically have to either limit to social equity? I think you said three years? Or is that part of the bylaw? Or we go with the one-to-one?
There's three options.
So, there's a presumption of compliance with the minimum acceptable equity standards by completing one of the three things, one of which is the bylaw. One is adopting another bylaw that only allows for social equity businesses for three years. The regulations do say bylaw, so query whether a policy along those lines would meet their regulatory standards, but we could kind of address that and maybe even have a conversation with them about it. And then the third one is creating a local approval process for equity applicants that is administered on a one-to-one basis, where general applicants are approved only after a social equity business has commenced operations. I think that, you know, we talked about, in practice, you guys are going to have to potentially limit to only one non-social equity applicant based on the regulations. But in order for you to meet this third prong, you would have to wait until the social equity business is in operation before you could even issue a host community agreement to a general applicant, which doesn't seem to be the goals of this bylaw. So if you don't take one of those three stances, then there's no presumption that you are in compliance with the minimum acceptable equity standards. And we would need to rely on all of our other policies, practices, and regulations to demonstrate that social equity businesses are on, are not discriminated against, and have all of the opportunities that the regulations contemplate in.
Any thoughts?
So, the concern, it sounds like, with the bylaw is primarily another conversation with town meeting.
Right. I mean, I don't know how many town meetings we voted this, and it's gone back and forth a couple of different times. And it's, it's, I'm...
What is the recommendation?
What do you mean? What is the recommendation?
What is the recommendation?
Before we get to a recommendation, what is the downside of not having a presumption?
So, if you don't have a presumption of compliance, then you need to demonstrate it through all of your other actions that you are meeting the standards set forth by the commission. And at this time, we're still sort of in this unknown period, right? They are considering draft guidance right now to municipalities, but it hasn't been issued.
Right.
So we don't know what that's going to look like. So, if the answer is, are you legally obligated to adopt a bylaw or take one of the other two actions established in the regulations? The answer is no, you're not. It's the easiest way to demonstrate presumptive compliance, but you can take other actions to ensure that you are in compliance with the social equity provisions of the regulations.
Okay. And, and do you, do you feel that if we, if, if we have a way through our rating system and our process that shows we're not discriminating and we're giving opportunities to social equity businesses, how important is it for us to hold this one-to-one standard of waiting for a non, waiting until a social equity is in business before allowing a non-social equity?
So, there's two different issues that you're talking about. One is whether we've created a local approval process to do the one-to-one. And if you do that, it gives you a presumption of compliance. And the regulations are very clear there that you can only grant a general applicant approval after the social equity applicant has commenced operations. So for you to obtain, to be warranted the presumption of compliance that's outlined in the regulations, you would have to wait until the social equity applicant has commenced operations. Now, what you may be referencing is that the regulations talk about where a community has previously capped the number of marijuana licenses and decides to increase that cap, that 50%, at least 50% of the increase needs to be reserved for social equity applicants. And we don't have any guidance from the commission at this point in time on how to read this regulation. What we do know, however, is that your bylaw prohibited retail establishments. And then after the adoption of these regulations, your bylaw was amended to allow three. So you increased your cap, arguably, such that two of those licenses may need to be reserved for social equity applicants. We don't have any guidance from the commission on this. So the conservative approach would be to reserve two of the three licenses for social equity applicants. However, again, we don't have any guidance, so I can't say that the commission isn't going to come out with a different view that a full prohibition is not the same as a cap or that, you know, it only applies to communities that had a licensing structure, which BORN doesn't have. But the regulation says very clearly, local approval. And local approval, to me, as a municipal attorney, means something different than a license. It could mean zoning approval. It could mean an HCA. So it's a bit ambiguous, and we just don't have any guidance from the commission such that reserving two of them for social equity applicants would protect the town the most.
What, what is the penalty for non-compliance?
So, the penalty for non-compliance, if you're not in compliance by, well, okay, so, for non-compliance of the social equity policy obligation.
Right.
The, the, the non-compliance penalty is equal to whatever community impact fees you collected in the year prior. What's unclear is if you haven't collected in the year prior, what does that mean? That said, this regulation around increasing the cap is in a different section of the regulations that doesn't deal with that CIF penalty. And so then the standard enforcement tools would apply, and they could issue sanctions. It's undefined what that means. We don't have experience. They've never issued them, to my knowledge, so we don't really know what the, what the result would be. And query what would happen for an applicant that goes through the whole process, and then the commission at the end of it says, we can't issue a, view a final license because the community's already issued one of its three to a non-social equity applicant.
So, one of the things that could happen is, not from a standpoint of the town of BORN being sanctioned, but then an applicant who's a non-social equity applicant who applies in the town of BORN and gets their host community agreement, if we're not in compliance with the social equity policy, the Cannabis Commission could say, we're not going to issue a license for that because, you know, they're not in compliance?
Potentially.
Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it knows whether they would actually do that, but it is in the toolbox for the commission.
And then you're not sure if, instead of a bylaw, if we established a social equity policy of the board, instead of having it as a bylaw, whether that would help with, might help with our demonstrating that we're meeting standards, but it might not be a presumption that we're meeting standards?
Right. You wouldn't be afforded the presumption. It doesn't mean that if you have a policy that maybe even mirrors the bylaw or goes further than the bylaw, that, that you're not, you know, deemed to be in compliance with the social equity requirements of the regulations.
All right. So, what is your, what, do you have a recommendation in the best way for us to proceed?
Yeah, so my recommendation right now is that, obviously, we wait to see what the commission does with this bylaw, and we wait to see what the commission does in regards to guidance. I also think that it's wise for me to try to have a conversation with the commission, if you're, if you authorize it, around the 50% cap, or around the cap and the, and the 50% reservation, because to my knowledge, it would, BORN will be the first community that this regulation applies to. So kind of understanding what at least the commissioners believe, you know, how the commissioners interpret this would be helpful. And that we wait. The bylaw, to me, right now, doesn't seem like a huge burden and would protect the town the most to adopt it, but if there are good policy reasons for not doing so, I'm open to having that conversation.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Comments?
I guess I'll wait for Steve to speak, but I'm all set right now.
Do you have any questions or comments, Anne-Marie?
No, you, you asked them.
All right, Steve. You may speak.
Steve's drawing a count of one. Thank you.
I have to go through protocol here.
I came up here about 10 minutes ago with, with about 10 questions, and six of them you asked. So that was, that was wonderful. And the attorney has done a wonderful job kind of laying it out. So, as I see it, we have two tracks, right? We have the presumptive track, which is, I guess we would say is the safer track to go. But we also have the, the route where we are, we are able to demonstrate to the CCC that, listen, we have taken into account the social equity component of this, you know, on a global level. We, again, what I've seen historically is social equity applicants are either very, they don't, they don't apply, or worse, I think, in my opinion, is they apply, they get a license, and then they don't have the capital or the resources to do it. Now, by my calculations, the town, once you have three fully operational dispensaries, we're talking a lot of money here. Thirty, forty thousand dollars a week coming into the town. No other, no other three businesses in town funnel that kind of money into the town. And that's just directly with the 3%. That's not indirectly through state funds and everything. The taxes on non-medical marijuana are 20%. So there's a lot of money being, coming into the state, into BORN, and then indirectly back to BORN. So, my suggestion would be the demonstrable route. I think, clearly, given social equity, a 25-point head start, I think that's a pretty strong indicator that we're taking serious the, the idea that the state has put out there that, listen, we want social equity candidates. We want to encourage them, and we want to give them a fair shake. In my opinion, it's, it's very fair, almost unfair to other candidates, but that's what the state wants, so that's what the state gets. But the, the other thing is, I don't want to see two things happen. I don't want to see us go back to a town meeting and have another referendum on marijuana. We don't want to do that. And I think that's what you indicated, Chair, Madam Chair. And the other thing I don't want to see is having good candidates that could open up, that could bring in a lot of money to town, that could put people to work, that would be locally owned, have those people have to sort of stand in, in place while we go through these other machinations of, of social equity and whatnot. So, my suggestion would be to push forward, as we are, with the understanding that we'll demonstrate to the Cannabis Control Commission that we are taking the issue serious and we are giving social equity candidates a very fair and reasonable opportunity, but not to the point that it makes the town and other candidates really suffer. That's my thoughts for now.
MJ?
Yes.
Do you want to motion, before we forget, to authorize Town Council to approach this Cannabis Control Commission for, for guidance? If that's the case, that's my motion.
Is there a second? So, yeah, and I would say guidance, not only on the cap issue, but also on the policy issue.
Sure.
And, and also on, you know, really emphasizing to them that we need some guidance, really, because I'm really concerned about the, what they put in here, that the social equity applicant needs to be in operation before you can issue a non-social equity. That seems very punitive. You can't, you know, if we, if we're holding a license for a social equity candidate and they can't go in operation or they can't function, it doesn't seem to me that we should be held up on issuing another license.
Yeah, and that stands for the presumption, though.
Yeah.
So, the town does not need to do that. The town could need all of the other requirements and, and hold license, hold two licenses for social equity and give one to a non-social equity applicant right now. It's only the, you get the presumption of compliance if you wait.
And could we do something in a policy that would, that would say that we'll hold for the non, if we're having, if we're having an open enrollment period, right, or an open application period, and we don't get social equity candidates, can we hold one license for social equity and issue up to our cap? I mean, can we make that as our policy? I mean, it's not in compliance with what they want, but if we don't get applicants, why, I mean, to Steve's point, why should we not be able to have the businesses if there aren't social equity candidates?
So, I think what I'd say to that is, the regulation says what the regulation says. So to the extent you want to do something different that diverges, you run the risk potentially of some type of enforcement action or an applicant going through the local process and not being afforded a license at the state level. We can, as, as I shared, we can seek a waiver to that requirement. Again, we're waiting on guidance on when a waiver would be given, but that is potentially one force of action. You know, we could have a policy where we'll wait a year, and if no social equity applicants come forward, we will petition the state for a waiver to give those two licenses.
Okay.
Non-social equity applicants. Whether the state would actually grant that waiver or not is unclear at this, at this time to me. You need to demonstrate undue hardship on the town, and, you know, it's unclear what that would mean.
Is it possible if we develop a policy that's very similar to the social equity bylaw template? Is there a way for us to submit that to the commission for, I mean, I know we don't have guidance yet, but could there possibly a way for us to submit that for review by the Cannabis Commission in saying that we don't want to do a bylaw until we know, until we're sure about what's going on, because the bylaw is very cumbersome? And I'm not sure they understand the process by which a bylaw, I mean, they don't understand what we have to go through to get a bylaw done, really.
Of course.
You know, so they're like, oh, you know, have an ordinance. They're thinking of a mayor, like, saying, oh, this is the ordinance, city council. When you're in a town meeting, a bylaw is like huge, I mean, it's huge. And then it has to go to the Attorney General's office, and then it's, you know, we couldn't even possibly have a bylaw till next year.
Absolutely. So what we could do is we could take, like the prior speaker was saying, we could take our best shot at this. We could create the policies that we think demonstrate compliance, everything shy of the full bylaw adoption. And we can upload it to the portal. Portal is supposed to be operational. It wasn't last month. I can check again to see, but, you know, we can upload it to the municipal part of the portal, and they'll review it and, I, you know, hopefully let us know. They haven't shared that they're going to let people know whether they're in compliance. They have shared they'll let people know if they're not in compliance. So, you know, again, we're waiting on more information from the commission.
Right.
But there is, you are required to upload all of your documentation that supports your compliance with the regulatory provisions. So we would do that, and then hopefully they would let us know if they, if the bylaw needs to be adopted.
Okay. So we have a motion. We're getting off topic here, but, so we have a motion to authorize Council to, to have a conversation with the Cannabis Commission on the cap issue, so we know what their position would be, on the policy issue, and if, I don't know, if maybe some sort of waiver like we're talking about would, would, would work. Because, you know, we only have three licenses, and, you know, if we, and, and three is not divisible by two, so, you know, so, so that means, you know, we're stuck with one. So, I, I would like to get some direction, and so I, I think that's our motion right now, to have her have that conversation. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a comment on that?
No, so I'll let you take the vote, and then...
Okay. So a motion by Peter, and second by Anne-Marie. We need to do a roll call, because Melissa is on Zoom. So, Melissa?
Yes.
Anne-Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ? Yes. So it's 4:00. The motion passes.
And so MJ, my question was, and maybe it's best asked to the attorney, but through you. When we decided on the 25%, the 25 points in the 100-point scale, I thought, my recollection was that the advice was that puts us into compliance. So is it the new information that's come to light in the last few weeks that has changed the, changed our perspective on that? Or is that still something that we can rely on and push forward with?
I think that's only one factor in compliance. I mean, I think it's, that's, that's a requirement, that when you have your 100 points, that you, you know, suppose, I, I mean, and it seems like a two-pronged, even if you, even if you had, suppose we had 10 applicants, and one of them was social equity, I mean, they'd be guaranteed like, I mean, I think what I'm hearing is, they're like, sort of, we don't have to give it to them just because, you know, they are, but we can't give out, right now, based on the, the commission's template, we can't give out two. We can't, we can give out one, and then we'd have two that we couldn't give out. So, this is a comment, to me, this is feedback that the commission, the Cannabis Commission needs to get directly, that this, the way they've structured that, the way they've structured this requirement is, it's impractical, and it's, you know, it's putting way too much burden. Like, have it be part of the rating. Give them a big, big, you know, kind of step up. But if, if they can't meet the criteria, and if they don't have funding, and if they can't get in operation, it shouldn't hold up the issuance of licenses.
And that's the mistake, and I'm really glad that you see that, and I know, I know the board sees that as well. But that's the mistake other communities made. They, they gave the licenses because everything looked okay. In some cases, they didn't vet the, the candidate at all. I mean, they didn't say, how are you going to fund this?
Funded in bias, right?
Well, no, no, this was, this was, granted, this was about four or five years ago, when it was a very new industry, and everybody, every community was kind of feeling their way through it all. You know, I was in Taunton last night there, in the process there, revising all their ordinances and trying to get into compliance. This is, this is a task, this, this compliance with the CCC is a big task for the Board of Selectmen, everywhere, city councils, every community, whether you have it or don't have it. If you didn't have it, you probably should start working on it. But in any case, yeah, there's a lot to get through here. It's very thick. It's very dense. I, I think we have really good counsel working on it. We have a great administration working on it, and you guys have been doing fantastic. So, I know we'll get there at some point. It's just, when will that point be?
We have to figure out what's the best, of course, what's the best path to take, right? Do we grab the one-of-three presumptives and just call it a day? Or is it better for the town? And I think the route of going for policymaking to ensure we're, have a backbone if someone does challenge the, you know, social equity piece.
I think we need to be able to say what our policy is. We need to, we need to have something in writing.
You do.
I cannot, I cannot see, I've been involved in this now for a couple of years in the town, and, and everything I've thought about has always been, what's in the best interest of the town? And the presumptive route is just not in the best interest of the town.
Not for small towns.
Because it's going to slow, yeah, we only have three. We don't have a dozen licenses. We can't give out six here and hold another six and say, okay, well, we just didn't get the applications. So we really have to do this the BORN way, and we have to, you know, have, have counsel engage with the CCC and say, hey, listen, we're kind of unique. We're kind of different. Where we are situated in Massachusetts, I mean, everybody has to go through BORN to get to Cape Cod. I mean, this is going to be a goldmine for the town, and, and we want to do it right from, from, from the beginning. And we're on the right track, I, I believe.
Evria, can you tell me, when is the comment period end for this bylaw?
Tomorrow.
The 25th.
So, the comment period on the bylaw ends tomorrow, but the rent, the, the cap provision is in the regulations and is effective. And so, I think there was some question about it, the application in the BORN context, but doing further digging, I think Brian and I are concerned that it would apply here in BORN, given that the regulations were adopted on October 31st, and your bylaw became effective on November 6th. So, you missed it by like six days. So, I hear what the speaker was saying about the struggle with social equity applicants actually becoming operational and that we don't have the financial support system in the state to really accomplish the goals that the commission is laying out, because these... because these individuals tend to be underfinanced for a whole host of reasons, including historic racism. But ultimately, what my concern is as town council is protecting the town from liability. And so to the extent we are going to want to issue these three licenses to all non-social equity applicants, I want to have a conversation with the commission and potentially go through the waiver process. Now...
So I would just say, I, I'm fine withholding one. I'm fine withholding one for a social equity candidate, and for a year or whatever, until like what you, and then applying for the waiver. I would like to be able to do two to non-social equity if we don't get qualified non-social equity candidates. And so that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't know if that's where everybody else is coming from.
No, I agree, and I, that's to my point, where how do we structure it in such a way that it doesn't get challenged, you know? And that we are showing, you know, social equity compliance, other than the, the three that, you know, the presumptives.
Yeah. So I would advise that in terms of moving forward and making sure that we keep moving forward towards our goal, that the board consider its social equity policy that we drafted today, or today, we can consider, you know, we want two to go to non-social equity applicants. We want one to be held for social equity applicants, and that, and then allow me to speak with the commission. And hopefully we'll have more guidance within the next week or so, such that you'll be able to issue your RFP on the timeline you specified. I think it is a risk, and I think that they're likely to come back to us and say that you have to file a full waiver, and who knows how long that process is going to take. But then we can start that process, if that's what the board wants to do.
The other thing is, I'm very interested in making a comment on the town bylaw, and I don't know if this is what the regulations say, and so they can't change the bylaw, where the social equity applicant is awarded an HCA. And, you know, if you award a host community agreement to a social equity, that should fulfill your obligation. You should, that should be the fulfillment of the obligation. Whether they can proceed, that they're held, that, that license is held for that person. And if they can't, you know, they can't become operational, it shouldn't hold other people from coming up for... And I don't know if they, if that's in the bylaw, or if it's in the regulation. Do you know the answer to that?
So the comment is that, I guess I'm not following the question, I'm sorry.
So, so there is this requirement that you hold the social equity, you know, you don't issue a non-social equity until you have a social equity applicant who's operational. So is, was that, having them operational, was that something they put into the temp, bylaw template? Or was that something that was implicit in the law or the regulation that was passed?
So that's in the regulation, but I'm not sure where you're reading it. I just pulled up the bylaw. Where are you reading that in the actual draft bylaw?
I don't know. I thought it was, I thought it was in there. If it's not in there, then it's okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's in there. It's in the policy that gives you presumptive compliance. If you hold until they're operational, then you're deemed to be in presumptive compliance. But that's not in the bylaw, the bylaw does...
Okay. Okay. So we could have an, we, okay. All right, thank you. So, is there anything else we want to do on this? How, where do we want to go on the direction of the policy?
So I, I have concern, I have serious concerns about some of the language in the draft policy.
Okay.
So if, if you're ready to pivot from bylaw to policy development, I, I don't want to...
Where's the draft, no, yeah, so where's the draft policy?
So Town of Bourne's Social Equity Plan, page 31 in your electronic packet. And, so this is close, this is the policy that incorporates some of those optional pieces from the bylaw. And if you look down at section three, Host Community Agreements and Equity Applicants is the title of that section. Number two, I, I don't, I do not recommend that you put this, I do not recommend that you put paragraph two in place.
How can we, how can we direct a town department saying you will do this when it's your, they work for you, they don't work for us?
Well, I mean, if that's your policy direction, then that's what I tell them to do. But for a whole number of reasons, we kind of are, you know, we do not provide advice to applicants. We don't tell them how to design their project, we don't design their project for them, we can't promise them that they will get a result from, from a permitting board, we can't promise them they'll get a building permit from a, from the building commissioner. Number two, make, number two, I understand what the, what the CCC is trying to do, but number two, put your municipal staff in a bind that in my opinion is...
Well, it's been your concern from the beginning. I mean, it's been your concern from the beginning, that the way, what this is requiring. We don't, first of all, we don't have the staff for it. We don't do it for any, we don't do it for anybody else, and we can't do it. I, I would simply say this town will create a website with guidance and resources for applicants. A municipal contact will be listed on the website, and will work with applicants in the permitting process.
And that's what's, that's what's obligated under the regulations. So that first sentence in section two is discretionary. Lots of communities are including that, and try, and they'll figure out what technical assistance needs down the line, I think. But if Bourne does not want to include that first sentence, you are not legally obligated to do so. It would just be another example of the town going above and beyond.
Yeah, and pretty much anything that's not required, I don't want to put in a policy.
So I, I do have a question, though, about the, the phrase "work closely with." Is that from the regulatory language, "work closely with"? And, and I need a definition for what that...
I don't want, I don't think I said closely.
No, but that's what it says.
Yeah, so, yeah.
The, the policy says, the contact person is fine, guidance and resources fine, contact person is fine. I'm objecting to the "and will work closely with."
Yeah.
Contact will be listed on the website.
Well, we answer, if someone's applying for a permit and they have a question, we answer the question.
Right.
But we're not working closely. I agree with you that closely should be struck. They will work with social equity applicants, we will work with all applicants.
We'll work with everybody.
We'll work with applicants in the permitting process. From the initial inquiry through the special permit in the building process? Or just we'll work with, in the permitting process, period?
We can put it in the permitting process.
Yeah.
I, I, I keep it simple. I don't want to make, I don't want to put in...
You want to set an expectation that, you know, they're going to be handheld, and we're going to do it for you.
Or that they're going to end up with a permit at the end.
Right, that too. Yeah.
Because there are things that even if the staff, frankly, even if the staff did the project for them, we can't guarantee that at the end of the day, a permit can issue.
Right.
Or that it won't be appealed. I mean, that is a, that is an, I feel like this is setting an expectation that we just, even if, I think...
No, I think we're totally in agreement with you. Where, I, I, I mean, I think, I, I'm, I think we have to be really, really careful about the wording and what expectations, and if it's not good enough, then, you know...
Well, this is a social equity policy, right? If we're going to entitle it social equity, then I think we should be specific in saying that we would work with social equity applicants.
Yeah.
In that.
But we will work with, not closely...
Not closely, but I think we should still identify that...
In the permitting process, period.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I, well, I mean, we will...
I think we should keep social equity, those, because it's a social equity policy. I think it should be consistent throughout the policy that that language is in there.
Right.
Yes, as long, I mean, if we can strike, for number two, if we can strike the first sentence, and then we can keep the second sentence, and then the last sentence...
And we'll work with.
Our municipal contact will be listed on the website and will work...
Strike closely.
With social equity applicants in the permitting process, period. That, that's what I would prefer.
We can make those changes and circulate another draft some next year.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, Marlene, that you want us to think about? I don't know about fees, are we going to waive, you know, so far we haven't set any fees for applicants, and we're not...
So I guess, so I have no problem with waiving any application fees for HCAs. I'm a little bit, I don't, I'm a little bit hesitant about the word "encourages." Because I don't want the select board put in a position of having to, of having to try to exert influence on...
And I also don't think that we should be waiving permit and license fees. They're not that much, I don't think, and we...
For the resources and the time the town's going to put in, we should be compensated for it.
Do we waive them for others?
No.
So then we're not discriminating, which is, the process is...
We get, we get, it's part of the hoxie, you know, we made the nonprofit pay the fees when they wanted them waived, so, I mean, that's, that's been outstanding in the past.
Fees are paid through the permitting process, right?
Yes, absolutely, there's no...
We just said the select board shall waive all HCA review fees for the social equity candidate, period? Okay. Eliminate the rest of it.
Why should we waive the fee for the social equity?
Just for the HCA review.
Just for the HCA agreement.
Oh, okay.
No permitting fees.
No permitting, okay.
I would like the board to dis, I don't necessarily have a, I don't have any concern with number one, but I think, you know, as part of this process, we need to talk about how, how you, what you mean by that, and how you want us to operationalize that, so enhance...
Is this 3-1, or 1...
Yes, yes, 3-1. Enhance marketing and outreach to potential social equity applicants. So what if, one of my questions, just because I'm ignorant in this whole process, is, so these, is there, is there a list? Is there a list of certified social equity applicants that we can, so can we like direct mail to them? Because I don't know how we would, I don't know how we would determine whose potential. Like, the, the potential, if there's a list of people who have gone through the process and received the certification, we can contact them, but I don't know how we would necessarily reach out to potential.
I, I don't even think we should say that, unless we're required to.
I, I would strike it altogether.
I mean, the select board will, will, you know, will, will, will make, you know...
I, I think just promote on the town websites and social media. Why do we have to, by promoting?
Do we need to do some sort of enhanced marketing, or can we make, we'll make, I mean, really, we're going to, we're going to...
That's in the newspaper, that's enhanced marketing, because you don't advertise every time in the newspaper.
We're going to post our stuff on the town website, which is a big stretch for us, to begin with.
On the website, social media is a huge...
As if we can get that done, we're going to be good.
Yeah.
So, well, you know, we'll provide, we'll provide socially equity, social equity applicants with information on the town's website.
Just make it flashing.
But if they, so, so it's, it's the direction, it's, it's who's obligated. So if, if, if any applicant, including social equity applicants, if the obligation is for them to check the town's website, it will be there. But this is saying it's our obligation to actively market out.
And I don't think that's what originally, from one of the first workshops that I attended, I think it's just to ensure that it's available.
But this is your policy describing how you're going above and beyond.
Right, so I don't think the enhanced marketing piece needs to be in there. I think we just through the policy, based on what I've read, is, or the requirement is that it, all of that information is on a website, and will be in social media. Or maybe we add it to a, you know, maybe we have a newspaper, you know, maybe we put an ad in the newspaper. I don't know.
I don't, I'm not, I don't think we need to be proactive like this. I mean, I think they want us to, but I don't, frankly, we don't, we don't have the resources to do it.
But we're required to have the website.
So we're going to have the website, and we're going to have social equity information on the website, including our social equity policy, and social, our social equity sort of program, like if we don't have fees, you know, we can have a social equity application section on our marijuana page, but I, that's the extent of what we're going to do.
I think that's the extent of the requirement. I don't think the enhanced marketing piece needs, and the outreach piece needs to be in here.
Well, I, I think the question is, do you want to go above and beyond the minimum requirements? To, to show, to, if we're not going to do the presumptive, you know, if we're not going to do the, one of the presumptive things, are there things you want to do at the policy level instead to show that you are affirmatively?
Put an ad in the pavement.
I'm just asking the question.
But you know what I mean? I mean, I, I don't think we do. I think in this case, I think what's required of us is enough.
Okay. Melissa?
I mean, I'm not sure I always agree on this, you know? This is why we have social equity, so that we can go above and above, beyond, and help people and assist people who are in that group. So doing the minimum, okay, that's fine, we don't want to go over and beyond, we don't have resources. But we should at least be thinking about, instead of saying, oh, let's just do the minimal. I mean, how does that say about us? Aren't we supposed to be supporting these social equity groups? Isn't that part of this whole process for the state?
What would you like to do? What, 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 what?
The bare bones minimum, and I don't think we should have to go jump through hoops to make it spectacular either, but, I mean...
Well, what would you want us to do? How would you state that in a policy? What would you want us to say?
Wouldn't we look at other communities and see what they're doing, and try to compare that, and see what other people are doing for that? I mean, are they all just going, ah, let's just do the bare minimum because we have to? I mean, I don't know, I'm just sitting in a different place on that, and I'm just going to say it, you know? It, it sounds like we're trying to just kind of, all right, well, we'll do the minimal, do the support.
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think we're saying we're doing, I don't think we're saying we're doing the minimum. I think we're saying we're going to meet the requirements. So the requirements include having a social equity policy, which we're doing. The, the requirements, you know, mean that we have to have information available to social equity candidates? We're going to provide them with assistance in the process? How do you feel that we need to reach out or enhance marketing to social equity people to bring them in? I mean...
Well, I think that, I, I think it's, I don't know how that looks either. I don't really have an answer for that, but what I'm saying is, is that we did say, oh, we're going to do the minimum that's required. So, I mean, that's what it's saying. So I'm just saying, maybe we ought to think about that, and maybe get some other comparisons before we just go, let's strike that, make sure we don't say too much, and we don't want to help too much. And I get it, we don't hold people's hands, we should treat everybody equally, but the social equity piece is part of the Commonwealth and the CCC, they're trying to, I mean, it's, it's obviously important to them, so we want to make sure we're doing a good job, too. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we should be, you know, predating and going above and beyond, and going crazy, you know, going crazy here, but I, I don't, also don't know as if I think saying, you know, we're going to do the minimum that's required because that's all we have to do, sounds that great either. That's all I'm saying.
Marlene, you have a comment?
I don't know, we have to look, I guess, we have to, and, we'll see what other towns are doing.
I'm not sure that, that there's, that, that it's there yet. I mean, Evra, are there other town examples, or is this like a whole new thing? That there's not even any examples?
So I see both, it is a whole new thing, but there are towns that have adopted social equity policies... So I'd say both, it is a whole new thing, but there are towns that have adopted social equity policies. Um, in the materials I submitted, a handful, um, I can continue to look to see if there are additional policies out there. Um, I'm not sure, I wasn't able to find any on the keep, but we can, um, I know Province Town, I believe, was thinking about it most recently, but we can definitely look into that. And see if we can find other social equity policies for your review.
Well, I think, I, I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, you spend a lot of time, lawyer time, like searching for social equity policies, so, Marlene.
Can I say, so, I did read through what, what was sent, and, um. I think the problem, I, I mean, honestly, to me, I think some of the struggle here is that these example policies. Were predated the regulation change.
Right.
So, there, there are pol, there are examples of policies from other communities, but they are not examples that apply anymore. After November sixth.
Well, I think, I think the statement would be more accurately described as, we don't know whether these policies are in compliance with the regulations.
Right.
So some of them seem like they need all of the October, October thirty first regulations, notwithstanding the fact that they were adopted before October thirty first. Others may be on the more minimalist scale, and we just don't know. The commission is precluded from taking any measures of enforcement prior to, that relate to, prior to May first of this year. Um, and then fines can't be put in place until May first of next year, so we don't even, we don't really know, I think is the answer. Um, I think the goal of BORN seems to be to move forward expeditiously, but completely, right, with a, a full thought. And I don't wanna get bogged down too much when we're never going to have answers, clear answers. So I think we need to take the best step we can at creating something. What we do know is that if you say to me, I'm gonna hold two licenses for a year for social equity, that policy is likely going to be fine, right? We know that if you go aggressive, you're gonna be fine. We don't know if you do the bare minimum, whether that meets the requirements if you also don't adopt the bylaw. It may, we just don't know. So maybe there's a middle ground. For example, if you say, I'm going to do enhanced outreach, what that means to me is talking to the CCC and making sure it's on their, their radar. That there are these additional licenses, advertising in maybe a cannabis air, uh, magazine, or doing, um, outreach to specific communities. It, it, that type of lift doesn't seem to be that hard, and I do know lots of communities are looking into that. To be their kind of checkmark that they went above and beyond. Now, every community needs to look at it as what works in BORN. If that's not gonna work in BORN, we don't put it in the policy. I mean, this is really your decision, but I think it is important to think about, you know, what are our goals, how do we make them, um, clear and, and put them in this policy?
Yeah. So, I, I think until we know what enhancements we would put in, it's difficult to put, to say we'd make enhancements, because we don't know what. We don't know what, we don't know what they would mean, so, um.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. So, Ibria, do you, do you have any idea when, when the. When the CCC is certifying the social equity applicants? At that point, are they doing any pro forma analysis, or looking to see if they're capitalized, or looking to see if they're viable?
I don't know the answer to that question. My, I, I, I don't know the answer.
The answer's no.
No, they, they.
The answer's no, but I don't know for sure.
So, on, like on a medical license, they have a lot of financial requirements, but they don't really have financial requirements for a non-medical license, so. Okay. So, I don't know, I think we should maybe, um, maybe Melissa, you can think about some wording that you would be comfortable with on that one section, based on some other policies. Maybe you can come back with a suggestion of what you would be comfortable with. I think that, I think, for me, if we said the select board will provide, um, information to potential social equity applicants on our website, um.
Plus have a point contact person to, for the process, plus, I mean, it's not just an isolation, that one piece of it, we were, we're.
Are we gonna have a separate social equity person, or are we gonna, I don't, I mean, do we?
Right, I mean, but this is, you know, this is a social equity plan. I mean, it's specific to social equity, so we're already enhancing and showing that we're.
Right.
So not, number, so, number one, the enhanced marketing and outreach to potential social equity applicants. That, to me, that, to me, that means somehow we have to identify social equity app, not just interest, not just interested applicant, general applicants. We have to pinpoint, and I, and that's not just, you know, I don't know how to, I don't know how to reach.
Well, we could, um, the social, we could say the select board will, um, uh, will provide outreach to the potential social equity applicants. By promoting available HCAs to the Cannabis Control Commission's Social Equity Program. And by providing information on the town's website.
And social media.
Well, I don't know, social.
We don't.
We don't, I wouldn't put social media in, I don't think we have a way to do it on social media. But we could, we could say, we could notify, when we do our, you know, we're, our open application period, we can notify. The Cannabis Commission that there are HCAs available for social equity program applicants, and that would meet that obligation.
I agree.
Okay, so if we can, I, I, if that's what we're doing, so if, when, when they're available, we note, we notice the CCC's. Social Equity Program, and, you know, we, we post it to the town's website, I'm very comfortable with that. It's, it's the active outreach kind of.
And I, I think that, I mean, I think, yeah, so we won't enhance marketing, but we will out, so I will outreach to potential social equity applicants. By noticing available HCAs to the Cannabis Control Commission's Social Equity Program, and on the town's website.
Yeah.
I think that would be, that, I find that okay, and then if we come up with other things, we can always add things.
Right, yes, we can always add.
But I, I'm cautious about stating that we'll do things when we don't have a method or way to do it, or we don't know what it would be, so. I think that, that makes sense. Is, um, what about, is there anything else on that topic, or are we good to move on? That topic of three, one, two, and three, we've covered, kind of, covered those three things. On four, the options.
So before you start diving into these conversations about these two, this was just showing you that you can go above and beyond in other ways. By, you know, limiting, get access to the HCAs for a specified period of time, um, you can just reserve them outright, so. These were just kind of, to get conversation started, they're not suggestions that you do one, both, or, you know, or, or, you know. To do these, these two requirements, you know.
Well, according to our comparative criteria, we're already giving twenty five points, so I don't know that A. With respects to like, you know, priority review, if we need to do that. Because we are already prioritizing them by giving them twenty five points on our comparative.
Well, we, we could say for a minimum of five years, when multiple applicants seek a host agreement, a host community agreement, the select board shall provide priority review to the applicants controlled by a majority comprised of social equity applicants. Priority review means that they shall be reviewed and receive twenty five points on the rating scale.
Comparative criteria, something add that in, because I don't think we're giving them, I don't think we should. We should review everybody all together. The priority is, you get twenty five points.
Yes.
Right off the bat.
Right.
And then you have opportunity to present, or maybe it's automatic opportunity to present. Maybe that's the priority too, where regardless of the points, if we decide to have a minimum score in the invite, or, right, I mean.
And I don't think, I don't think we can set up, we can't, I don't think we can.
Regardless of the score, they get, they get, um, not only the twenty five points, but the.
I don't think we can say if applicants go X or above the commu, host community agreement shall be offered, because we, we don't have.
I don't think we should either.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should say that. I think we'll just give them the points, and that's what we mean by priority.
Do you wanna do more than twenty five?
Um.
Like, it, I think it makes sense to have the points kind of be the.
Right.
The standard, but is, you know.
I don't know, we kind of came up with twenty five points for that, and then we, we had some discussion about the point distribution, and I kinda liked the way we ended up with it last time.
Yeah, yeah.
The five for.
Because I, I think that the business plan is forty points, the, uh, the equity standards was twenty five, and what was our other? We have ten for location and twenty five percent for ownership, so.
I thought we knocked that down. I thought we knocked down.
Thirty five.
Uh, I thought we knocked down the.
Forty, fifty, sixty, and forty. No, I don't know, that's what's on here.
Knocked location down to five.
We might have. I'm going by what's in our draft thing.
So ten, twenty five, twenty five, and forty on the business plan. That's what I, that's what I.
I, we can, we can think about that, whether, I mean, and if we, if we say that we're only, we're gonna hold at least one. For a period of, you know, for a period of one year. If they come back at us, maybe we'll say something like, well, we're gonna give them more points or something, I don't know.
Right, we still need to deal with the regulatory requirement around the cap. We need to speak to the commission about that, because they could come back to us and say, you need to have two of them indefinitely reserved unless you get a waiver, and so. That's something we would need to talk about.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, well, let's get the answer on that. And if this is all we have to say for the policy. I think there were some other things, I think there were some other things in the Framingham one that I thought, um.
We, should we have definition in the policy too?
Well, this, so this draft, correct me if I'm wrong here, please, Ibria, this dra, the way I'm reading this draft policy. Is that it would go hand in hand with the, with a, the model bylaw. But if we're not doing the bylaw approach, should the policy be more enhanced to cover some of the, you know, the, the non-controversial things that are in the bylaw?
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
Yeah.
And what we can do is, um, I can work on a new social equity policy based on the conversation today. Um, and we can get you another draft for next week that does incorporate a little bit more of the bylaw as well.
Yeah, I think that would be good, and some of the things in the Framingham example, that talks about income and residence, I mean, some of it. I, I don't know if it's, you know, that black, African American, Hispanic, Latino, we wanna say indigenous people, you know, so there's. It, I think we need to be, have a little bit of enhancement, 'cause it's not, we're not just saying if they're on the list, we're, if they're not a certified. I don't even know if they're certifying social equity candidates anymore, or, um, whether we wanna have some definition in there, so.
No, it has to be certified by the CCC.
Yeah, yeah.
Designated by them.
So, we can definitely, um, expand upon those definitions.
Okay.
To give more clarity in the policy. We were just relying on the regulatory definitions, which is also fine, but if you want it to have more hats, we can incorporate those in here.
And I, I mean, have, I like to have sometimes things all together, so you don't have to go back to someplace else to figure out what the definition is, if you're clear that your definition, just throw it in there, so.
Well, yeah, we, we should definitely have a definition of social equity applicant.
Yeah.
In there.
Right, it is, but it's relying on the Cannabis Control Commission's definitions, it says if the Cannabis Control Commission certifies them as an equity applicant, so then you'd have to go to the Cannabis Control Commission's records to see what. Qualifies someone as an equity applicant, so I can put it in the policy itself. It's not a big deal.
Right, but what, okay.
I guess, I guess that confused me a little bit, so, they would have to, they would have to apply. Or they would have to submit their application for the HCA already having been certified, right? Like, not as a potential, like, they need to come in with that in hand, it, right?
Well, that, that's not what this policy says. This policy says a social equity applicant is individuals or entities that are defined by the Control Commission as.
Is this Framingham?
No, this is what's in our draft.
Oh, this is our draft, sorry.
An economic empowerment priority applicant, a social equity program participant, or a socle, social equity businesses, so. They're not necessarily, social equity businesses are all those certified? They're not, if, are they defined by the Cannabis Commission, or are they certified by the Ca, Cannabis Control Commission?
Yeah, that's a good point, but the regulations, let's see.
The, I thought it was just.
We can, we can add clarity, 'cause the regulations say that it.
I thought.
It says that the policy must deal with businesses and individuals that would meet the definition of social equity business, social equity priority program participants. And economic empowerment priority applicants as defined by the commission.
Right.
So it doesn't say they have been certified, it says they only meet the definition, and so then we have to determine, you know.
The draft policy doesn't say that, but I'll expand on this. We'll definitely.
Yeah, because I think Marlene wants them to be certified, in order, in order to.
Is there an actual certification, or are they just deemed determined by CCC?
There's a certification.
There is, okay, okay.
But I guess my theory with that would be, if they have to have a certification at the time they apply to you, is that somehow discriminatory? Because someone may want to go through the process contemporaneously or something, like, let me give it some thought.
Right, yeah.
I, I think that's act, I think we really have to figure that out, because. What, what if we move forward with someone. Who we think will be certified, and then they end up not being certified? Have we kind of.
I, I agree.
Wasted our time with that one?
So, so, if they qualify, we can still count them, I think. I don't think we wanna say they have to be certified. I think we wanna say, but. The Framingham policy says you demonstrate you meet at least one of the following criteria, so. Income does not exceed forty percent, four hundred percent, residency in Massachusetts for after conviction or continuance without finding residency, so they could.
We have to determine.
No, they have to demonstrate to us, I am a social equity candidate because this, and this is my documentation, that I meet that criteria.
Do we have to verify that?
Otherwise, they don't get twenty five points.
No, but to answer Marlene's question, I think the way we would address it is that i- if we are giving a license, a host community agreement. To an applicant that is a social equity applicant, and we're using that to count as one of our social equities. We would put somewhere in the host community agreement that if they are not certified as a social equity applicant, that they lose their host community agreement.
Yeah, okay.
Engine on them actually being a social equity applicant. So I think, you know, I think there's ways to contract around that.
Yes, I'm ready.
What about the minority business enterprise and the veterans business enterprise? Do they fall under this umbrella, and we need to include them as well in this policy?
No, no, so the Framingham policy goes further than the current regulations, so query whether that would be deemed sufficient under the. Current policy, under the new regulations, the regulations require for just those three groups.
Yeah.
Then I would advise limiting it to just those three groups.
Those three groups. The other come under the rating, under, under the ownership rating, you can get points for those things, but.
True.
Exactly.
I didn't know if it would fall into this umbrella, and if we should have.
I think that was something we came up on the last time. Okay, do we have any other comments on this part of the policy, and you're just gonna come back with a redraft?
I just think as a practice, that we should, if, as we're writing our policies, we should acronyms, you know, to explain what they are as well, because, and this one, you only have one, you know, there are some here, like EAs, stuff like that, but sometimes, you know, we spout them, people have no idea what we're talking about, so people should know exactly, you know.
Like HCA?
Yeah.
Do we, I know this is kind of a little bit, probably too detailed, but I just have to add.
Go ahead, this is why we're doing this in a workshop.
So when we're talking, when we're talking, so if people are not coming in kind of pre-certified, do, does the town of Born have to accept and maintain that documentation about drug convictions, or those, or any of those type of very personal, like, I don't, I don't want to have to maintain that information. Do we have to have that here?
Can we leave that verification?
We can leave it all with the CCC.
Can we leave it to the, I kind of like your idea, of you apply, this is the basis you're applying, we will process your application that way, contingent on you getting certified as that type of economic, that kind of social equity candidate by the Cannabis Control Commission, so maybe we don't even.
But I don't even want to have the, I don't even want to be responsible for, for the material being, you know, mishandled.
Right.
Yeah, we could have them file an attestation that like, they are requesting the fact that they need one of the various requirements, and that we just make the HCAs conditional on that being a valid social equity applicant.
Is the board okay with not actually physically having that documentation?
I like the attestation better.
Yeah, I like the, the HCA, I think it's, it's definitely a safer place to be, and.
Right, you're going to state, you're going to give us an attestation that you're this kind of candidate, and your approval for the HCA is going to be contingent on you getting that type of certification from the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right, I mean, I don't even like how much personal information I have to collect for liquor licenses, like, I don't want, the town of Born should not be responsible for maintaining this type of information.
Right, no, I agree, it is, like, yeah, okay. All right, are you feel like you have the information you need for a redraft?
Okay.
We good? This is like exhausting, this is like policy work, it's so exhausting, it's like being a lawyer, all right. So, do we want to talk about the rating scales? Do we want to talk, what do we want to talk about next?
So, I'm going to have, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to leave soon, can we, can we just get to the next meeting date?
Yes.
And then I can leave, and you can keep going if you want.
So, next meeting date, if we do, we've been doing every two weeks, but that conflicts with the JBCC.
Unless we want to come in earlier that day.
Oh, good.
Like noon time? Noon, you know, so that way we can be out, and be able to get to the.
No.
Okay.
That's town meeting week, we're going to be, that's town meeting.
I know, I know.
I'm not, I'm not, we're not going to meet for this, on this, for town meeting week, and a lot of, I think we're making a lot of progress, I think.
Bangin' out.
I think we're making a lot of progress.
So maybe May 15th, the following week?
I think that makes the most sense.
I can do, I can do earlier on May 15th?
Okay, what time is earlier?
I can do one.
ABCC training is at noon on the 15th, and I missed it last year, I didn't want to kind of do it.
I can do the morning on the 15th.
How do other people feel about?
Just tell me what time and I'll be there.
What's, what's morning?
Is 10 o'clock reasonable, or is that too?
Well, if I, I don't know, maybe I just won't do the ABCC training ever, I won't do it, I didn't do it last time, and I was interested in it because of the, sort of the discussions that we have to have, even though we've pretty much determined that we can't do what we talked about, do, we can't do this kind of process for liquor licenses, we just have to put people on a waiting list, and then notify them when a license comes available, right? Evria, that's what you said? I'm just thinking about whether or not I can do it. So in that case, in that case.
What about Monday, what about Monday the 13th? What about a Monday instead of a Wednesday?
Uh, Monday the 13th is a Cape Bridges Open House.
Yeah.
The Massachusetts Public Forum.
The state is really kind of.
I know, they're killing us.
The state is really jamming up our calendars.
All right, so I, if, so you want to do the 15th at like 1 o'clock, I won't do the ABCC thing, I'll just, we'll just do this at 1.
Where's the ABCC, is it a Zoom, or is it a?
No, it's in Hyannis.
Oh.
It's all right.
May 15?
What about 1:30? How long do you think it'll be?
I, so, I mean, I can.
No, it's, it's in, it's in Hyannis, I wouldn't be able to do it, that's fine. 1 o'clock, I can do, I won't do it, it's fine, I have to make decisions, and this is a decision that I'm making, I'm making a choice, and I'm okay with that choice. Can you do 1 o'clock, or is that, or is you have a?
Melissa?
What about you, Melissa, does 1 o'clock on the 15th of May, or is it a conflict for you?
I don't know, it looks okay right now.
All right, so let's do 1 PM on May 15th.
For 90 minutes?
Yes, I think 90 minutes is a good amount of time, I think we get too burnt out after 90 minutes.
A nice long lunch.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think we'll have some answers, because I think not having a social equity bylaw, and sort of trying to go with the policy, if we can get the Cannabis Control Commission to kind of work with us on that, will speed things up for us, so I think that's good. Did anybody have any comments on the HCA, or do we want to just wait for that next time?
Let's wait for that next time, I think.
Yeah.
Let's, yeah, let's just do this.
We're moving it to a second reading, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I did want to make one change, so, to the HCA, so I may circulate another draft, if that's okay. I wanted to give you guys the ability to terminate the HCA if an individual is not paying a certified CIF, so I want to add that.
Okay. All right, so we'll recirculate, we'll do it and recirculate, and then we'll talk about it next time.
Want to just approve the minutes?
Sure.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 27th, 2024?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's, I think, Melissa, you still there? We have to do a roll call on the minutes?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
J, yes, Peter?
Yes.
400.
And then a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none? Melissa?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And J, yes, Peter?
Yes.
We are adjourned.